...for special use permit to do business as a vehicle repair shop and drive through a restaurant for a half a drive for a future restaurant, six thirty on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this one with the great justice for all.
As a point of clarification concerning mask, if you are, if you receive both doses, then you're comfortable with it, feel free to take your mask off. If not, no problem with you wearing it. Roll call, please.
Planning and zoning board commissioners, Jerry Daly.
Here.
George Duperstein.
Here.
Kreese.
Here.
Koval.
Here.
Jerenowski.
Here.
Georgia Ann Duperstein here, and Chanelle.
Here.
The motion to approve the agenda, someone. Roll call.
Commissioners Jerry Daly.
Aye.
George Duperstein.
Here.
Kreese.
Aye.
Koval.
Aye.
Jerenowski.
Aye.
Georgia Ann Duperstein.
Aye.
And Chanelle.
Hi. Notice or requirement we do.
Okay, the notice on the letter, the notice was published in the Daily Bureau on Wednesday, April fourteenth, for one day only. Ninety certified letters were mailed out on April sixteenth, and we have received seventy-five receipts, letters back. The public hearing signs were posted on Monday, May third, and so Firestone has met all the requirements that is needed.
Thank you. The next is administration of oath to all who will testify, so including our guests. If anyone wishes to speak during the meeting, you'll need to stand and take the oath with us now.
So you might as well everybody get up and do it with us, just so that we don't have to re... Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do swear or affirm.
I do swear or affirm.
To testify truthfully before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Testify truthfully before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the village of Haynesville.
Of the village of Haynesville.
During the hearing for a special use permit.
During the hearing for a special use permit.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you're on.
I think it's easier for me to...
That's true. And if you feel better, the microphone is portable, you can take it with you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If you need to use it, let me know. I'm using pretty, pretty boy shirts. No, my understanding is that Firestone has been through this process before. So basically, we've done this, come through and kind of redesigned the building to make it a little bit cheaper. We've basically taken off the second story of it and taken away one of the bays. And aside from that, this is pretty much the exact same design that we had before. So I think I'd like to open up with any questions that you guys might have such a community project, and we've been there before.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I apologize. I'm Mohammed Starks from Ramp Construction, and we're the general contractor that is working with, great enjoy Firestone to put this project together.
All right. You said you removed the second floor.
Yes.
A little bit more detail, please.
Okay.
And how you might have changed the front, if at all.
What we did is in the original drawing, there was a second floor here in the middle, over this area here. And what we do is kept the facade. That was something that was approved. Bill was like, look at it. So we took that extra storage space out, Jordan Grant said they didn't need it, but you know, kind of designed the building with a parapet wall to have the same look that you guys approved before.
Okay.
So it's now just fully a one-story building, and there's no storage space up on the center.
And there was, the bays on the southeast end are double-sided.
Yes.
If I seem to recall, two cars, you could stack two cars?
So there's garage doors on front and back.
Okay.
A lot of entrance from either way.
Okay. And one was removed from the end?
Yeah, one.
Okay.
And so what we've done is we removed that for economy at this point, but are building the pad out and covering up the landscape materials so that if we need to expand in the future, that's an option towards us. But for now, you know, leave it for potential expansion, but taking the off now.
By pad, you're not talking about concrete? Are you building, extending concrete out and putting durable top or just under... What are you putting there when you said you're extending the pad?
We are extending concrete out for it.
Well...
This is more Johnson.
More Johnson, I mean. When we say pad, we have capabilities of adding another bay to the site where it used to be. I don't have the orientation right there, but... Southeast. So as we're in concrete, we're going to have grants to add there for future excavation and foundation for additional bay. Okay.
So, I apologize.
Would panel two or three show down your current site plan?
Yes. And?
And for board members, if you don't recall this, gentlemen, just focus John Halsiel, our community planner from Halsiel Levine.
So, on this plan, this is the area right here that we're, that's in discussion. So this would be the base, and then we're leaving the space open for further, for further expansion.
Does this make sense, or can I? All right. Board member questions, commission questions?
Yeah, I have a bunch, but is this the commission's section, or does it make any difference?
Is there anything else that you need to present or would like to present concerning this, or are you ready just to hear our questions? We're ready to hear your questions. All right, George.
I realize that we've seen a bunch of this before, and so, and I realize we're also at the eleven hour, so to speak. But when I got this thing in the email the other day, and all we had to look at was the elevation, so I'll direct my comments to that because as far as the internal stuff, I don't have any issue with that. But looking at the elevation as it, as we see it right now, a little bit, under the findings of facts that we also got that we have to deal with tonight, it says, "Will the proposed development be harmonious with, in accordance with, the general objectives of the comprehensive plan?" And it's my opinion that it's not. Now, in creating this comprehensive plan back in two thousand and ten, we're trying to develop some kind of a character to this village, somewhat more rustic. And so far, it's not your problem, but so far, we haven't done it. Now, with the exception of the mayor and Georgia Ann, no one else on this board was on the board when we adopted this two thousand and ten comprehensive plan.
Mr. Jerenowski is with us.
I'm still here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
In any event, how about the rest of you?
What upset you, George, about the presentation?
The elevation doesn't have the look as far as what we have in the comprehensive plan.
In fact, it's the same look that we passed.
Yeah, I know that, but we have another bite in the apple foot tonight, so I didn't want to address something and see if we can make... Anyway, here's something I could...
For you.
The comprehensive plan.
Oh, wait. I hear the office.
Can I?
Yep, just a second.
Who are you? What's going? Joe?
No, I can see it.
All right. Look, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but as you notice, if you look at this excerpt...
You have a question.
It looks like there's an undesirable and a desirable that we're looking at here.
Okay.
And if you look at the undesirable portion of the, this excerpt, it's pretty similar to what we have right now. So if we're not going to follow the comprehensive plan, then why do we, why bother having it? And why, why would we spend the money to updates it if we're not going to follow the thing? Well, I know we went down this road before when we grew Duncan Doris in the late plan. Now, our challenge then was, if you remember, was we had some corporate dictates, but nevertheless, we were able to get some elevation enhancements. So that... Wait a minute, I'm not finished. Let me, let me get through my comments, and then you can do whatever you want. The takeaway then, as I remember, was that we were going to be a little more diligent in adhering to the comprehensive plan going forward. Well, obviously, we didn't with Firestone's first plan, and Firestone's redoing their plan was a golden opportunity to revisit our comprehensive plan, but it appears we didn't do that either the first time around. And anyway, so where we are right now, I don't certainly want to stick it to Firestone in this eleven hours. It's not their fault, and I realized, having worked in quite a few contracts in my military career, that if you don't articulate your desires early on, any changes at a late date are very costly. So as a possible compromise at this late date, might we realize a change to Firestone's elevation here in a form of maybe more rustic siding and colors and a little of the brick facing, for example? It might even be less expensive, I don't know. And can we replicate the pink roof that you have there on the yellow portion and another place as well throughout in the front of the building? So that's, you know, I, obviously, we can't redo the entire thing, and I recognize that. But can we, since we're talking about some cosmetic things, can we do something to make it a little more rustic in accordance with the comprehensive plan?
Let me see if I can clarify a point. How much, Mohammed, how much of that facade is wood or wood-like?
Tell me that.
The center portion here.
The center portion, yeah.
Which is the entry to the Firestone, you're also a tenant's major. This projection is more wood-looking with the siding.
And the lower, underneath the windows, the yellow portion is?
Well, this is a concrete block, a split-faced concrete block, masonry material.
Wood, wood face, did I hear? No.
No. Masonry.
Face.
Yes, split-faced concrete block. I have split-face massimo with more of irregular split-face appearance.
Maybe a difference in the color. Joe, was it the first, first time around, the, what is yellow here, a different color?
Yeah, we had a green color in our plans before. And the brick was a red multicolor, and then the wood siding was a, was a green color. And I think the comments then was concerning about the green and red.
Would it be more, more costly by a large amount, for example, to move, not to move, but to replicate that pink roof area in yellow someplace else as well?
Another extension or dimension?
I do not think, and I'm not going to...
So...
And just to, just, we tried to replicate what it improved.
Yeah.
And so this is the first time hearing, and there was not even another issue that was wrong with it? So this design is, you know, really based on what I thought.
No, I, I understand. Absolutely.
And there, there is an opportunity to...
We, we didn't do perhaps what we should have done as far as early on getting more involved with the comprehensive plan. I don't know why our plan didn't get involved in this either, but in any event.
George, if we voted and approved it, these gentlemen followed what we...
No, I understand, okay. So I'm just asking, at this point, this late date in the, in the process, is there anything we can do without really turning you upside down? Because I don't want to do that at this late date. Is there anything that we can do to make it a little more attractive in conso, in conformance with our comprehensive plan?
I would say our biggest constraint is the gentleman Firestone, who already gave us a pretty tight budget. And so, you know, our, we don't mind redesigning it, but we don't mind getting this look. That's, I mean, we're not too far gone with that yet, but it's got to hit that budget. I mean, they told us hundred percent.
All right.
There, the two options here are two issues here. One would be the costs involved in trying to redesign the other portion of the building to look a little like the big roof, pink roof portion. That's one aspect. And maybe that's more cost, costly as far as it was. The other is, even if we were to leave it like it is, changing the colors or and/or changing some of the facing to be more rustic is, is maybe not as expensive. I don't know. You tell me.
Yeah, there's always possibilities to change various parts of the facade. So when I look at your picture example of something that is undesirable character, flat roof.
Right, right.
We don't have that. We took the time and expense to really differentiate the flat roof with different proportions.
Okay.
On both sides, and then in the middle, aparting from that, having more of a definition of entry with the gable, and still again, as I said, these side views more commercial-oriented. So I don't see anything that's undesirable. Like, I can see what you're saying, one of the comprehensive plan doesn't like flat roofs.
All right, let's just...
And that's what we don't have.
All right, let's assume for the sake of argument that we, I agree with what you're saying, and we don't have a purely flat roof. What about color changes or some of the facades making it more rustic, either replacing new brick or putting?
This might bother everybody because it maybe looks like it's this.
It does.
But, and that's an artist's rendition, but really, if we really pay attention to the detail more, this is more above color, split face, not relaxed. So we've got a masonry-looking color for the reds, brown. This could be like a limestone buff color. So I think maybe that'd bother everybody because like, why does this look like this? Well, it won't. This will be siding wood-oriented. This is maybe throwing everybody because it's not.
Well, what, what about the color of the, the yellow portion with the big roof? That, and that's?
There's so many color variations with that property that we have.
Can I ask a question? Could we, would it be less expensive to use siding instead of brick and use a type, kind of siding that has a texture in it?
In this area?
Yes.
Well, that's a question for the operators, the owners, because this is made in tree. This is going to last a long time, as the texture and everything is going to look better and last a long time. This is an accentuation of the entry. If you wanted to depart from that, to define the entry, but I think masonry would be great use for longevity of the building.
The projected yellow two-story is, if I seem to recall from our first approval, was planking of plank light, I don't know what you're...
Yeah, it was like a hardy board.
Hardy board type.
Type of siding.
It's like a cementitious board, it's a planking that's also made in tree, but we can...
Looks like wood.
Do a variation on the color. I mean, we can duplicate this in a better buff color, to answer your question about colors, and we can look at that as a warmer wood tone if we want, a wood tone that might be comparable to the brick color, but not sand.
Why couldn't you have said same, that same planking in a different color on where the brick is?
We absolutely can, but it would be an added expense to the owners in the future when they have to upkeep. So we had the longevity of the building in mind.
Okay. Mr. Jerenowski?
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be because it's been known to have, not often, but if we were to add another pink roof, like the yellow section, like George suggested, we would essentially be having to add two for symmetry, correct? Because it would look dumb to have it on just one side and not the other.
Well, if you're going to add it here, you'll add it here.
That's what we said. It would then therefore be over the bays, which would kind of look kind of dumb, in my opinion.
Don't make a very expensive...
Yeah.
All right, I'm not talking, I'm just talking like for looks. It would, you couldn't do it on one side without the other.
You could, couldn't you do it in the middle of those three? Couldn't you do it in the middle of those three?
That's just what Joe's talking about.
But the, the length of the building on the side where the bays are isn't as, isn't the same size.
It's the same building.
It's the same building.
So I, I would like to put, since I was testifying, I think it looks fine the way it is, and I mean, color, big color, color choice is fine. We can talk about color, but as far as the building itself, I think you've gotten out of your way to do the varying refine that you suggested. I personally like the brick. I think the brick looks more natural. Wood also looks natural too, but I think the brick is, is very natural looking.
Joe?
Yeah?
What color would you like? It's your, your business.
I honestly care less.
Thanks for pulling out of the fire, man.
So, I mean, really, if you have a different color in mind, we'll put the different color. That is minimal difference to me in the end. As long as, like, the brick idea was really pulling from the designs and all around the entire village, and I think that was part of the comprehensive, to try to keep it cohesive. And everything around here has got brick, so keeping the brick for longevity, for, you know, cohesiveness throughout the village makes the most sense. And then we have a wooden feature to kind of break up from it just being all stone.
Mr. Halsiel?
Yes. Yeah, I don't like the yellow. I mean, and this is, now we're talking just about aesthetics at this point. I understand sort of value engineering of building after you get initial approval to sort of decrease the articulation, change the building interior a little bit, you sharpen your pass, so you try to get the same aesthetic for a little prices. Fairly standard. I think they've done a pretty good job with that. There's a little bit of our building articulation that's no longer present, demarcating the different tenant spaces with a vertical contrast that goes sort of column-like between each tenant space. They've got a little bit, what looks like probably a two-inch relief at a few different points along the facade. The thing that makes it look a little bit confusing here is I like the forest green or darker being going that was important. I can't remember if the board did as well or not in the previous version, but what looks a little bit, I guess I would say synthetic here is you've got this split-face masonry kind of providing the foundation or base of this going up about four feet is the same color yellow appearance as the wood siding board, and that would look weird, but that's not what it's going to be in real life. So this rendering is a little bit off of what it looks like. I would not recommend making the whole thing wood. I would not recommend making the whole thing boarding, but the location of this on the site, what's going to make this work or not, is the landscaping and the site itself, not the building per se. I can think back to the Duncan Doris as well as this one, it's atypical in comprehensive plans typically to have design guidelines for commercial properties. And I know your comprehensive plan has that, but to project forward ten-plus years and put a rustic elements on contemporary commercial development that has to be resilient, full maintenance, high quality appearing over time for a major arterial commercial corridor, wood siding doesn't age well like a well-designed brick building will age. So the compromise last time was to put the middle element, because I think the first concept, it didn't have the brick, so, or the wood. So they brought in the pitch roof, they brought in the wood to provide some component of the rustic wood siding element, to pick up some of the components of the comprehensive plan. I think initially it was all brick. Aesthetically, I like the all brick, but it's not consistent with the plan, so this was the, sort of the hybrid solution that was agreed to. I'm not a fan of the light-colored yellow, but that's just the visual preference at this point. So from, the modifications do not intensify the site, they do not increase traffic, they do not add more injurious impact to adjoining properties, it does not change the primary or secondary use of the property. So from a land use, zoning, site intensification, impact perspective, there are no changes on this one versus the other one. At this point, it's primarily just aesthetics, and that could be a discussion that the board and the applicant can have. I mean, I don't like the, like the yellow, that's me.
I think, I like what agreement that the yellow goes.
Yeah, she does.
I mean, that's what caught my eye at first place. And we're not, we're not approving that.
Right.
Or that at all tonight. So that could be decided in the future before you have to order any material.
Right. I am, and again, I, in the plan I reviewed before, maybe there was, I looked at one that was dated at the same time, special use was provided last time. I don't know if you have the previously approved site plan, the previously approved special use plans. Yeah, can you handle this? Or not?
We should, the previous approved?
Yeah. The only reason I'm wondering that is it appears as though not, there's only changes to the building, but the landscape islands have been removed, the landscape islands between the service base have been removed. It looks like a lot of the landscaping on the site, that would be interior parking online, stamping has been removed from the scaled-down version, but we can't, remember, sure, unless I look at the previous plan.
I think the only differences we have on there was there was some landscaping by the bay doors.
That's what I thought too, yeah.
Otherwise, we did not have any islands that came out taking away parking spaces.
There were no peninsulas in the front, there was stuff in the front.
No, because we didn't feel it was worth taking away a parking space when we actually have more landscaping on the property than was required for the space.
Joe, didn't we have some landscaping around some of the light poles that were in the parking lot?
No, I don't believe we did. There was no poles like directly in the parking lot.
Okay.
There, there was on, on the building, and then there was, it was all, I forget how you call it, but no, no lighting left the space.
Joe, can I give you this microphone?
Yeah, sorry.
Georgia Ann?
The other buildings in the village were built before the comprehensive plan. So trying to match it to things that we didn't have any control over in the first place isn't exactly how we like to look at it. Now, if we're only talking about color changes, could we do it, I mean, brick comes in lots of different colors, but do we get something other than red brick that would look a little more rustic, maybe in the brown tones or beige or something? And then, and then even if you wanted the dark green, it would look okay. The reason we didn't like green before was because it was red brick and red and green, but if we change the color of the brick, maybe the dark green, because that is a Haynesville color, is dark green, as you can see, but we have it in our logo and our street lights are green, I mean, there's, our water tower is green, so, I mean, if that's the least that you could do, that'd be great.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, John Halsiel?
Yes.
I'll do that for free.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, sir. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to, at least for an opinion, we can't grant the S U P, especially with permit until a regular board meeting, but for the zoning commission to ask questions, we're not design approving tonight.
Correct.
So the question of color, can we handle when appropriately? Question, color and exterior material seems to be the issue.
You would be, with the final approval of the special use request would be handled by the village board, the recommendation regarding the matter would be made by this to the village board. So what would come out of this proceeding would be a vote of a recommendation to the village board, who then take that recommendation into consideration. A recommendation could be made as presented, approval as presented by the applicant, or it could be denied, or the recommendation be approval subject to changes that the applicant has given direction to. They then make those changes per direction, and they bring that back, and the approval then is evaluated based on that direction. So the recommendation is by this group, the approval is by the building's board.
I understand. I, I, I certainly like the, the...
Pink?
Yeah, no, not the pink, the, the awnings. Uh, but again, it's a color issue. So, uh, I would certainly be more comfortable with saying that we would approve the thing subject to maybe some, some color changes either of the brick and the awnings and some of the other facade. So the question is, if that's all you're gonna do is really change the color per se, uh, are we really talking a lot of money here or not?
No.
No. Okay. Let's make sure everybody else has had a chance to speak. Wally, anything?
The, no, you, the, the brick is gonna be reddish, or is it gonna be the brown?
Well, I think what would be an ideal move forward is to run a review of this right now. Is if we put together a few more samples that have our colors in them so that you guys can come in and look at four or five different choices and then choose them. I mean, it is.
Right.
Wouldn't, I mean, you're not asking for us to raise the price of the project too much by changing, you know, colors of siding and different materials. So whatever it is that, you know, you guys like, we certainly can go down that road. Especially if Joe doesn't care, I mean, that's how I'm finding concerns whether, you know, he, we sent this to him, we set thumbs up. You know, if he tells us no, he's our client.
Right.
Was the choice of yellow more to bring out the building there, you know, as people are going by? Or, you know, is it more just...
I'm gonna let Warren go with it.
You tell your own...
Was the choice of yellow and red to kind of make the, the building pop when you drove by or... No, I, I think, I think we need to, like, uh, Ron said, raise some samples next time. Show you the brick variation, show you a little more of a wood tone here, and show you more of a above limestone down here. I just kind of really transform the coloration and the rendering.
Right, okay, right. And that's, I think what we're all saying, well, I don't know.
You're struggling with it because maybe the artist's rendition really didn't depict it properly. But we'll bring samples, everyone, you know, run right for the samples.
Anything else, Wally? No, Mary?
I think the facade is okay, other than the colors.
Okay, great. John?
Did you make any changes to the landscaping plan?
Well, this, I think, what is appropriate, I'll, I'll, I can answer that question now. The, I was gonna ask that a long time, I wasn't in the door, I was going through my emails on my phone. Uh, and looked at the PDF, I was giving the review for the creative plan for this meeting. And the landscaping plan is different than what's in this pack.
So like, different from the one you had in the review?
Yeah. So, um, the landscaping in this pack, again, I'm not saying that this landscaping plan is inappropriate or not correct, but it's different than what was approved in the first special use. And the place where it's most apparent is like in that little island by the drive-through area. The previous landscaping plan, a lot of the perils and small classes and maybe shrubs and whatever else. And this just sort of shows three trees there. So the landscaping plan is different than was approved last night. It's not the landscaping that I, that I reviewed for this.
But it's in keeping with our, we planned.
Well, the one we approved prior.
Right, but I'm saying like, we have certain things set up in comprehensive plan, like this many of this, this many of that are square foot. The, the plan that they presented right now still keeps within those guidelines?
Daddy, oh no.
Let me, let me put the question this way. Should we ask Mohammed and his group to replicate the plan that was, do you have a copy of the old plan, or can you obtain it?
We do not have a copy of the old plan, if we look for it, then I'm sure we're not unable to find it.
Joe, do you have the old plans? If not, we can probably...
I'm sure I, I, I'm not, I, I'm sure back in my office, I'm sure.
Okay, here's what I suggest, and I'll list some comments from the board. John, if you could get the contact information and forward it to Mohammed, we could replicate the previous landscaping plan? Or tweet, I mean...
So, I mean, as far, you know, this is, I kind of pulled it up here, we've got planning beds. What, what was the...
Can I just take a look at it and make some suggestions?
Okay.
Right.
But I, I like the building the way it is, to be honest.
Not in the middle right now, just on landscaping, I'm sorry for that question.
No, no, I was saying, like, I, if the landscape, what I was saying is, I like the building the way it is right now, colors aside. If the landscaping plan is the same, I'm fine with it.
We had to have the landscaping drawn and re-done by the...
It had to be redone partially because of the building being shortened and also that wonderful berm that's behind you.
Right.
Okay. All right, Georgie Anne, thoughts, comments?
I would accept it at, with the caveat that you would bring samples of other colored bricks and, um, other colored paint and to see what the siding or whatever that material is that's...
It's, that's not a problem.
And, and maybe, um, colors of the awnings that would blend with the different brick positive things.
So their offer of bringing a different color scheme would, and what the mortar board that looks like planking looks like.
And I would caution the board that in the future, we study the comprehensive plan right away so we can make any changes at the...
Or we rewrite it and bring it up to date. Jaggal?
I, I'm okay with the changes. I, I, you know, we can, we can talk about the color. Um, let's take a look at the landscaping plan, compare the, this one to that, and see what the differences are. But, uh, the general design, I'm okay with it.
All right. At this point, any other comments from the board? We will have one more opportunity. Ms. Yen? Okay, public comments or questions? Anyone? Last chance for the board this evening. Anything else that we have heard to date?
Can I ask a question?
Five bucks.
In a perfect world, if we were going to get closer to, um, what you guys are looking for, what would you change? I mean, let's just pretend that...
Color.
Color?
Definitely, but, but the yellow needs to become something else.
Or top off with peaks, things like that, or that's...
If, I, I think a couple of board members, I mean, can feel free to speak, would like more peaks, but from what I heard, the expense would be...
I don't think it would add to anything to, to the, the building itself. If I had two more peaks, unlike you said, you're putting one on, on the, on the bays.
Okay, I don't want to open up Canada more, but we also want the city, Joe, everybody to be happy with what, you know, it's...
I think at this point in time, you know, recognizing the expense of doing any, as long as we look at the colors of the facade, as, as was pointed out, the aesthetics, I think.
Okay, is direction of the architect, or are you fair to say that it'll be for something more earth tones? Not like bright yellows or bright greens or bright, but more earth tones?
Yes.
So of all these on here, it's this bottom one? With the, I mean, it's, it's red or brick, but we've got browns, brick.
Okay, so the things you can apply color to would be the center section, the awnings, possible a different shade of brick. You guys do this for a living, bring us some samples? Or if you can, now, our, we're scheduled for approval two weeks from now. If you can somehow get samples to us before then, we can have them in here and trustees can come in and look at it. And we, even if you provide a different sketch with some samples, they can lay it out and they can view it. And that way, we can at least walk into the next meeting, uh, with a better feeling.
Okay.
Acceptable?
Yes, sir.
So if I, if I have to follow it correctly, if we can stick with more of a brown tone brick and then a, a green well-colored?
Brown and green were suggested, uh, by two of the six board members.
Right, well, I mean, obviously, the, the color options are gonna be infamous, so I just wanna make, make sure we can narrow it down to this more appealing look when we become, and it can be simpler to save some...
I'll apply the point.
Wood.
Earth, earth tones is Johnson.
Earth tones.
Mr. Halski, any other comments?
I was gonna say, it's okay with the plan commission, I can connect with you on building material color and landscaping so that when something's presented next time, we know it sort of hits all the marks or at least our best shot at it. So then it's on, uh, down whether it does, doesn't, is what it should be, and it's just an aesthetic question, so.
All right, then, so Kathy can write it down. John, would you share, once again, the statement that we could, for a recommendation that we need to come out of here?
Yeah, I, I think that would be a recommendation to the building's board for approval of special use number, whatever, whatever, for the iron wheel use and drive-through facility development, subject to the changes related to building material and color and landscaping as directed, as sub-directed. And then that recommendation for a positive recommendation is what we will be considering, subject to them effectively addressing the landscaping aesthetic issues.
Okay. Got that?
I did, I talked...
John, you guys are... So, since I'm a member of board, I can actually make a motion. I move that we accept the current plan with the caveat, exceptions of, uh, color changes, landscaping plan updating.
Yeah, revisions to materials, material color, landscaping as correction.
Okay, oh, it's recorded. All right. I'll second that. Okay. Any further discussion? So Kathy wrote down as taped.
We're voting to change the recommendation.
Recognition not accepted.
Not voting to...
Yeah, so when the board can do that. All right. You gonna sit this best one? Roll call, ladies.
Commissioner Jared Daly?
Aye.
George Duberstein?
Aye.
Priest?
Aye.
Kobo?
Aye.
Dernoski?
Aye.
Georgie Anne Duberstein?
Aye.
Emily Shanaw, aye. Motion carried.
Do you have motions to adjourn? Move. All in favor? Aye. Meeting is closed at seven twelve.